We call a meeting for July 25th to order.
Thank you.
Ms. Washington?
Certainly. Mr. Hurt?
Here.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. McGinnis?
Here.
Mr. Bohan?
Here.
Ms. Remark is absent. Ms. Washington, here. Mr. Hoitzma?
Here.
Mr. Davis?
Here.
Ms. Benjamin?
Here.
Mr. Neal?
Here.
Mr. Barhu?
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have a quorum.
All right. Meetings from last months, minutes, from May's minutes?
Need to make a correction on those. Shows that I was absent, which I was, but it also shows that I voted. Wish I didn't.
Wish you didn't.
Both of them, I believe.
Found quite a few of those.
How'd you do that?
Yeah.
Was that a call or a vote or something?
I was being clever. Stripteaseery. Communication break. I was deciding on behalf.
Okay, any other?
Yeah, I think, um, Mr. Chair, the same way, I was absent at meeting, but I was marked present and I didn't vote.
Okay.
For both items also.
Board, we...
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second, all right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it. An applicant's request? Let's get some.
Item number four, Land Development Code text amendment, uh, remove city commission supermajority voting requirements. DEV 2013 dash zero five two.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dennis Mrazek, Planner with the City of Daytona Beach. Again, this is a request by the City of Daytona Beach Beaches Development and Administrative Services Department to amend the Land Development Code, Article Three, Section One Point Three, to remove the city commission's supermajority voting requirements. Uh, when the city commission takes action on certain applications that require a decision or a recommendation of the planning board, if the city commission does take an action consistent with the planning board's recommendation, a simple majority of the vote of the city commission would be required. However, if the city commission does look at an act, look to act on an item that is contrary to the planning board's recommendation, then a vote greater to a simple majority would be required. A supermajority would be required. Uh, this request would remove the supermajority requirement from the, uh, from the, uh, and require a simple majority vote from the city commission to take an action that is contrary to the planning board recommendation. Uh, this item, the supermajority requirement, was discussed by the city commission at a recent strategic planning session, and staff was directed to bring the item forward to the city commission for action. Um, I do have some information in the packet on when the actual supermajority, and I call it a supermajority, it's not written as a supermajority in the Land Development Code, but it's just been known as a supermajority over the years. Um, this was actually passed back in 1976, so it has been around for nearly forty years. Uh, staff does recommend approval of the request. An affirmative vote of six is required by the planning board to recommend approval to the city commission. Anything less than that would require a supermajority by the city commission to approve. And ask for your staff's presentation.
Thank you. Are there any questions of staff, please?
I've got a question.
Hmm?
This was kind of brought up with Clarion, wasn't it? When they were reviewing the Land Development Code?
Exactly, it was one of the items that did come up. Um, it, uh, it was discussed, it was going to be part of the Land Development Code rewrite, and it was always anticipated to be part of the Land Development Code rewrite. Uh, but after the strategic planning session, uh, the city commission directed staff to move the item forward in advance of the rewrite. Uh, when Clarion did do their analysis, they noted that, uh, they don't know, there were very few, if any, communities that do have a supermajority. So this was a very unusual voting requirement for a city.
Good. Go ahead.
Do you know, how many, in the thirty-seven years, do you know how many times that it's gone to the city commission that it's required?
Yeah. I don't have, I don't have the stats for the last thirty-seven years. In some of the earlier years, we wouldn't even be able to find it. We just may not have the records to be able to do that. Uh, what we can do is we can go back and take a look at the, maybe the last three years or the last five years and be able to come up with numbers. Offhand, I know of a couple that went last year to the city commission and, um, with varying results at the city commission.
Varying results?
Yeah, if you recall, the Daytona Kennel Club was modifying their PCD, they were putting it in EMC, and I believe that that one, um, that one was recommended for denial at the planning board, uh, four or five. It did go on to the city commission, and the city commission did, was required to have a supermajority, and they did get that supermajority, and it was eventually approved. Um, there was additionally, there was another one, it was Robbie O'Connell's, which, it was a rezoning to a planned development. Uh, that was a development out there in, uh, in Main Street. Um, the planning board recommended denial. It went to the city commission, they didn't have the votes to have the supermajority, and that one failed at the city commission. Um, and I did have another one that I just looked up. There was a prohibited uses in the redevelopment areas. Uh, this was one that was a recommendation of approval from the city, from the planning board. Went on to the city commission, and when it went to the city commission, city commission actually denied the application and actually took no action, and that was the end of it. So that was over the last year, two years. Uh, now, we can go back and take a look additionally, maybe put some numbers together and present that to the city commission so they can have that record of some of the things that were happening in the past.
Yeah, I was curious, I, uh, called Larry Kelly, who was the mayor at the time and who signed this, asking for refresh his memory thirty-seven years ago, which he, and, uh, he said he would have to suppose it maybe, he was between the planning board four years and then the mayor, the manager at the time, that maybe two or three times, he said quite truthfully, I don't remember one time, something came up, he said, oh, it's very... I said, well, at the time I've been on the planning board, there have been a few, but maybe there's a few more projects going on at the time, but we've had some.
I think what you'd also have to take a look at is items perhaps that were recommended for denial at the planning board that the applicant had made a decision at that point not to move it forward to the city commission because of maybe the onerous responsibility of maybe getting that supermajority. So maybe they would have pulled back an application and not taken it to the city commission for fear that...
That typically didn't what happened, they might pull it back, but then they would make changes and bring it back.
Sometimes, yes. Yes, sometimes that's what they would do, yes.
So we really would accomplish for the city commission what the city was looking to accomplish.
That is a question.
Hmm?
Do we know why in June of seventy-six, the commission and the planning board voted to go from a simple majority to a supermajority?
Uh, no, we did some research on this. The only thing we were able to find on the city commission minutes were action minutes, and they were just the votes of the city commission. We weren't able to find anything on the planning board minutes. Uh, the minutes that we have access to at, in our department only go back to nineteen eighty-four, so we weren't able to access anything back to seventy-six. So at this point, and I, you know, nearly forty years ago, our, you know, internal history, just, you know, speaking with some people at City Hall, there's not a whole lot of people who've been here at City Hall that long, and, you know, if they were, if you have somebody who is sixty years old, they were in their early twenties, and I don't know if they would be necessarily plugged into what was going on at the city commission anyway. So, um, it's, it was a while ago, so...
Well, my challenge was, if we're going to make this change, which is a fairly major text change, I thought we should know why the change was made initially thirty-seven years ago.
Uh, that's true, and that may be a fair argument, a fair question. Um, all's I know right now at this point in time, the current city commission is taking a look and making this modification. Carrie?
Um, yeah, I checked with the current city attorney. Um, she was not here at the time, however, she worked with the former planning director, who was here at the time, Rick Priolletti. Um, so Marie was trying to tell me what Rick recalled, or her recollection of what Rick called. Um, so I talked to him today, and he said his memory of it was that they were trying to take the politics out of land use and zoning and kind of put weight to what the planning board was saying and not overturn them unless there was compelling reason to do so. Um, he said that he would have been here tonight and explain the history of it if he could, but he is out of state and cannot be here tonight.
Thank you.
All right.
Maybe Mr. Hoitzma?
Mr. Hoitzma?
No, I was just a child.
He was a child. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. There are no other, um, notes or for approval at this time, but I would like to just question the board. Are there any other questions as far as what Mr. Mrazek has presented to us?
May I ask a question or a question? Is there, we should let the audience know that they want to make any statements?
Uh, I'm about to do that.
I'm sorry.
Okay, he just reminded me at the same time. That's okay. Okay, no public statements? In favor?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Michael Schnaps Tyler, 150 Magnolia Avenue, Daytona Beach. Here tonight, uh, in my capacity as president of the Young Professionals Group and our board of directors. Like to point out that we do have some of our board of directors here this evening, sitting in the audience. And the board of YPG comprises of a number of twenty-year-old, thirty-year-old, and forty-year-old professionals in our community who are working together to make, um, this area more attractive to young professionals, bringing them into the area, and then retaining our young professionals once they're here. And as a group, we voted to support this item because we feel that a number of the projects that end up creating opportunities to live, work, and play in Daytona Beach come before this board and are decided, you know, before they go on to the city commission. And we feel that all the projects should have an equal opportunity, once they leave this board, to go up to the city commission for approval. Um, when young professionals are looking for where they want to live, you know, they're looking to see, are there jobs there? And a lot of the office and commercial developments that come into the community are decided by, you know, this board. Uh, a lot of the, um, play opportunities, restaurants, shopping, all those projects all come before this board as well, and obviously the residential projects. So, uh, that's really our justification for supporting what city staff has brought for you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any more statements from our audience? Okay. All right. For a motion?
Discussion.
Oh, discussion, yes. Thank you.
I have discussion.
Go ahead.
In the microphone, please. I, I still am concerned, uh, that we understand the reason why the supermajority was put into place. And I wish there was some written documentation, and I wish that Mr. Priolletti was here to talk to us and give us, uh, contemporaneous history. Uh, because I, we don't have any difficulty when we make a text amendment change based on change in circumstances, when we update a fee schedule, or when we do a text amendment to accommodate a development that we're approving, and we put a text amendment that validates that. Uh, or any other text amendment that, uh, that brings us up to date and seems very reasonable. But in this case, uh, those of us on the, uh, the Land Development Code Subcommittee, we had seen this. So only four of us really have been exposed to the discussion about this, and there was really not that much discussion in the Clarion rewrite, because this is only one of many items that were under discussion.
Hmm.
Clarion did make the recommendation that we change to accommodate, uh, because other, uh, other boards in surrounding areas do not have this particular supermajority rule. But that made me even more curious as to why we had it. Uh, and that's why I kind of feel uncomfortable. If it's, it's coming up in the Clarion rewrite, uh, there has not been a public hearing on this matter, and that will come up when the, when Clarion is put up for, for a public hearing discussion. And there has not been, our own board has not discussed this particular issue. So the four of us on the Subcommittee, we have discussed it very, very briefly. But it seems to me that it is a significant change. It's not a, uh, a minor text change. It's a serious change that affects both the planning board and the way that the city commission votes. And my conclusion, based on the information from Rick Priolletti, uh, it seemed to me that the, the supermajority rule was working as a check and balance. So that controversial projects did not make their way to the city commission, or they made their way to the city commission with a strong vote on behalf of the planning board. Because as you know, we, we look at things quite closely. And it seemed to me that this check and balance, uh, part of this was an important part of what we're doing. Uh, and I thought that, that's why I kind of wanted more background on how it came about. I know we have the very brief statement that, uh, that our attorney got from the prior planning director, but I would really like to hear more of a discussion from him. And since the, uh, the Land Development Code item is going to go through in the rewrite, and he will be available next month or the month after, when he goes back from vacation, I don't understand the urgency of doing this this month. Because all of us have not had the benefit of seeing, seeing the change in the Land Development Code rewrite, and we haven't had the, uh, information from somebody who was here at the time for some contemporaneous, uh, testimony. And who knows, by next month, maybe perhaps we'll find some discussion in planning board or city commission minutes prior to June of seventy-six, working up to the date they took the vote. I just feel it's a matter of, we need enough information, because this is not a minor text amendment. It's a fairly significant amendment. And I, I just, uh, I think it seems premature for us to be doing this text amendment at this time when we have these other things, the code rewrite coming. All of us have not discussed this in depth except what the, the report we have in front of us. So that is my feeling on this matter. I don't know how the rest of my board members feel on this.
Okay. We shall find out. Uh, board? One more?
I, I tend to agree with you. I feel a little pushed on this too, and I see this as modest as both of us. But I, yes, I've always looked at it, it only comes to that when there is a problem. And I look at it as we're trying to help assist the city commission before it gets to them, that we do some of the due diligence work prior to that point. And it only comes up if there is a problem. Uh, I think there's been progress made in the fact that we are encouraged, anyone in these developments, to contact the people around them, they don't have to, but we stress it, I know our staff does. I know each of the boards do when something comes up. But when you do have occasions that come on through, and someone's not willing, uh, I'm sorry, I think that there will be a little bit of diminishment in the fact that there may be, shouldn't say it maybe, but some attorneys happen to see this, and we'll just push it right on through and not worry about what the planning board has to say about anything. And I know that you have to bring forward some things that you may not like, but if a person wants to bring it forward, you have to okay to bring it to us. And that's why we do have to delve into some things.
Hmm.
So I, I agree, I don't think it's a willy-nilly thing that we need to do. And I, I see no reason of why we couldn't throw it off for a month and have some information on it. That's my feeling.
I, I don't see us really putting it off. I think, you know, Clarion brought this up, that this is a disadvantage for the city, that no other municipalities have this. And it's the city, the city commission has directed it to come forward. City staff has researched it and recommended that it come forward and recommend for passing. So I think with all of those eyes that have looked at it, that, you know, that we should move it forward.
How much of the discussion did happen with the city commission of this? As I understood this, it was brought up in the last minute, the last item, and doesn't look like they really...
Well, they had a, they had a Saturday work session where they were all there. Um, it was brought up and discussed by, all the commission were there. Um, you know, my personal feeling is this is a policy decision. City commission will make the ultimate decision. City commission has asked us to bring this forward. Staff had already recommended this, the consultant, we used Clarion, said it's very unusual, they recommend it. Uh, it isn't a requirement of any other recommendation from any other board. I would suggest that waiting a month, doing more research, isn't going to change anything, still a policy matter. So I would suggest we, uh, the city commission know your feelings, and they'll make a policy decision in, um, the code change or not.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Yeah, I wonder if, um, you know, I think some of the things you're saying certainly have some merit. But I think the point is, we serve, we serve now at the pleasure of the city commission. They put us here. And, and I think if anybody has to argue this case, it needs to be argued to the city commission, not to us.
Correct.
And I think we just have to, we have to do what they want us to do, and actually, this is their choice, not ours.
I, I agree, it's, you know, it somewhat diminishes the power of this board, and for us to be having a say in diminishing our own power is ridiculously to a board of the city commission. And, you know, at the end of the day, this is a quasi-individual board of volunteers, not elected people. And, you know, like you have been saying before, you know, a developer takes a project on, it doesn't get through this board, you can't, you know, it's a volunteer board of appointed people, just shouldn't have that much power in diminishing their ability to get through city commission. Or, at the end of the day, the citizens of Daytona Beach have elected their commissioner, and if they don't like the project in their neighborhood, we need to talk this question out.
I wanted to...
Those are my thoughts.
Just, I wanted to interject. Um, and I agree with a great deal that's said. I understand Mr. McGinnis's point, uh, but in the meantime, our due diligence is to discuss it and make a decision. It has been handed to us, uh, at the request of the city commission. I'm on that committee that's discussing the land development code changes. We have not, I mean, this has really been lighted, but at the same time, I'm sure there's going to be further discussion. And since the ultimate decision for or against, once we're through with it, is going to rely on the thoughts of the city commission that we're doing our part by making a decision here, they're asking us to do it and just passing it on.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to ask the staff, in their opinion, has there been any occasion at which this has helped or hasn't helped?
Well, clearly, there has been, um, applicants that it has caused a real problem far to have a negative recommendation by the planning board. Um, if this passes, there'll still be a recommendation from the planning board going to city commission, there'll still be a record of that. The only difference is the policy matter, whether it needs a supermajority overturning the planning board or not. But in terms of your recommendation and the decision, that's still going to continue.
Make a motion, we approve Land Development Code text...
Well, I...
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't, um, I didn't see, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Being the new person on the board, I'm still trying to fully understand all the dynamics. And one of the concerns I have, again, if you diminish the authority or the power that's given to this board, and what is the purpose or the function of this board? I thought, and my understanding, was some help make recommendation to the city commission so they can vote, and they may or may not always agree with our vote. However, um, to have one person, I'm looking at Commissioner Henry's comment, that he said, um, and then he says that it takes a supermajority for the commission to overturn any board. He always felt as the elected official that they should have final say so by a simple majority. Well, I think having more information to make that decision is vital, because if they can overturn everything this board makes, then what is the purpose or the function of this board? That would be my comment. Um, I would like more information, certainly to look at it. I haven't been around a long, long time on this board. But again, um, I want what's best for our city, and I think that we all serve because we want what's best for our city. And I think to put in the check and balances between this board and the city commission offers that balance, and it will, um, give some accountability. And so that's my two cents on it, and in saying that it was sent to us to discuss and to vote on, so, um, that's my portion.
Was there someone else?
Yeah, I just have my final comment. Ms. Washington, I think you said the, the, the commission now sent this to us for a vote, uh, from last month, okay.
Yeah.
But, and my concern is, that's correct, and that's, it seems that what the commission's feelings, at least from the draft minutes that we saw, that they would like to see this particular item changed. But then our responsibility, since it is a text amendment, is to discuss it as we usually discuss text amendments. And since it's also an item that's in our Land Development Code proposed revisions, I was also looking forward, and those revisions, to the public comment on that, on this particular item, and also to our board comment on this particular, tonight we've gotten some board comment on this item, but not to the extent, the board has not been able to see the draft with the footnotes from Clarion, that other municipalities do not currently have this. But what we don't, what we don't also know, also facts, whether or not any other municipalities did have something like this and changed. We just know what the current situation is. So I keep falling back to, I would just like to have more information, uh, as to how it was instituted.
Okay.
That's my final word.
I would like to add, also, you know, this is not the only advisory board at City of Daytona Beach. There's multiple other boards that certainly have a purpose and serve a purpose without requiring supermajority, you know, at the city commission, the planning board's kind of unique in that. So to say that, you know, it's going to undermine the power of this board or even the validity of getting approval from this board, well, that can be said then for any advisory board at the city from the, you know, golf course advisory board, the Muni Golf Course down there, so...
But Mr. Davis, that's more the reason to know why the commission in nineteen seventy-six wanted a supermajority.
And city staff has not been able to uncover that, and...
No, but we do have somebody that can provide contemporaneous evidence, but he's not here tonight. And also, we have not also examined all of the, uh, minutes up to June seventy-six. It's just, for me, it's an information item, and since it is fairly crucial, I think we should have as much information in front of us as possible.
Five days is not a lot of time.
Yeah.
You know, for what we had to look at.
Mr. Bohan?
I, I agree, I agree with what, some of this and some of that. And I, and I do want to touch on something I think that Tim is really saying that I really agree with. That, uh, and in the concerns that we have, that we feel like we're diminishing our power of this board, we're appointed by the commission. So the people who have appointed us think enough of us and our ability to go through this material, go through the items that are presented to us on, on a monthly basis, and know that we're not going to agree with them a hundred percent of the time, but that they know that they've got some eyes that are looking over the stuff that they trust. Or they wouldn't have appointed us.
That's correct.
And so I don't look at it, yes, it is a diminished power... And so I don't look at it, yes, it is a diminished power, but I don't think that we need that power to be effective. I think that we can come together as a planning board and offer our suggestions to the commission, and I do believe the commission will listen to what we vote on, what we say, what we think, what our concerns are, because they put us in this position to do so. But I really don't think, just because we're going to, we're losing a yield of power or something, we're yielding some power, that it diminishes us, because I still think that the line goes true. We're here for a reason, we're appointed for a reason. They trust us to be here, or they would remove us and put somebody else in.
I don't think it's a, people are worried about our losing power. I think it's another tool, however, for development coming through, if there is concern any place in it, and it gives better information than if that comes out to the city commission, which I feel is doing our job.
And I, I hear that, and I, and we talk about what, what's the reason for having it in 1976? And, you know, there's a lot of things that we vote on in years past, and that was before I was born, after age was in. But there's a lot of reasons, we vote, we put in a lot of things, and, you know, sometimes it just outlive its course. It's time to, you know, it doesn't work anymore. And we've always, we've got to be changing, we've got to be growing, we've got to be, we've got to be allowing progression and progress in our community, and if we've had a third party come in and say that this is, this is something that's hindering us, we, Daytona needs some help, and we need to be doing everything we can to boost the economy here, to encourage economic growth, and, and I just feel like at the day, we can't sit here as a board and put a definitive answer on why we have that. I, I mean, I think we can argue it, so I don't mean to take too much time talking about it, but I feel like that this is something that maybe has outlived its course, and we should follow through with the recommendation of the commission.
I have to say that since I've been reading this, I've come to a decision on my own, and some might not think it to be valid, but the fact is that our commissioners have a very vital job to do. And as a planning board member, being selected by them and put in a position to make such valuable evaluations of things as far as their being supported, I think it's worth it to listen to what they're telling us. We have a 1976 plan in front of us that has fallen behind the growing state. What we need to do is stay conscious of the present and our very near future, so that we could sort of make better inclined decisions ourselves as a planning board to support the efforts of our city commissioners. It's just my opinion, but our city commissioners do have a job to do, and as has been stated several times, that we are here to support them, but everything that we need as far as information will be in front of us, but the fact is that it's not here does discourage thought, but it does not eliminate why we're doing this. We're doing it to support our commissioners in the position so that when they're, they're in a position to make a decision, they can do that without having to worry about it too much, that they are doing what's needed for our city, and they will, they're there to support us too, as we are them. And with that being said, and nothing else by anyone?
Well, if we're not going to consider putting it off for another month, then I think that it would behoove this board to all vote the same way.
The same way.
And showing support of that to the commission.
I agree.
I disagree. We're talking about a text amendment. We're not, we're not talking about diminishing the authority of the board, that's, we're talking about text amendment.
I understand. I totally understand. Thank you. Motion, move, I hear a second.
Yeah.
I make a motion, we approve land development code text amendment, remove city commission's supermajority voting requirements, DEV 2013-52.
Second.
Inverted motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposes?
Nay.
Ayes have it.
Mr. Chairman, the number five, I'll, I'll cover that. We put a copy of the current bylaws in your package, I believe, at the last month, and asked people to look at that and advise us if they had any thoughts for needing to change. We did not put it in your package again this time.
Mm-hmm.
It wasn't part of their package?
I got it.
Oh, it's in the folder, but it wasn't in their package that they got. If you need more time, we could delay this. We weren't asking you to vote tonight, anyway. We're asking you to gather up any comments and input, and we were planning on bringing it back, or we would proceed with any comments you've got. If you have any tonight, we could take them. If you want to delay that, that's fine, too.
Is this on the bylaws?
Yeah, this is on the bylaws, number, number five.
Are there any changes to...
Well, I think there's a couple of things in here that are old and obsolete. We haven't really discussed this in five years that I've been with this board. There's a couple of things in here. One, in the bylaws under section one, it talks about terms of the office, it shall be two years. Land development code says chairman is a one-year term, it can be a plus one. There's a couple of things like that, that we, it says we follow Roberts Rules of Order. Actually, I think what we follow is a modified Roberts Rules of Order, but, but these bylaws say what they are, and that's why we brought it to your attention to discuss it and see if we want to make any changes. Now, I will point out that in the end, the way that this works is, this was recommended from this board, the city commission authorized it, so any changes to this, we'd have to go back to the commission for them to authorize as well, but I think there are a couple of things that are old, have been in here a long time, just kind of worked around it. And another item says anything that gets postponed gets put to the end of the next agenda item. Some of those items have been large crud, and we didn't want them to wait to the end, so, I mean, those kind of things, we might want to reconsider, maybe not, but...
But you didn't mark any of those that you would like to be reconsidered?
At this point, we had just put it in your package and asked for input. We haven't received any, but...
But the chairman kind of has that option or whatever of moving the items...
Yes, absolutely.
To the front, because when we do have...
We have worked around it, it has, it has hamstrung us, however, thought it was time to put it back and discuss it at some point, whether tonight or soon.
As a matter of fact, in the last meeting, I believe, we moved one item up front and changed its location to speed things along as far as getting a balance for the evening's agenda, and it was successful without a problem.
Right. Well, yeah, because when, when we have huge audience participation, and they're the last thing on the agenda, and we've got a long agenda...
Yes.
It's, you know, it's only fair to the people to, you know, for the chairman to move it up, so they can, the people can go home.
Right, right.
There's, there's another item in page three at the very top, saying that except for administrative items, the planning board should grant only one motion by the applicant. Sometimes we have done more than one continuance for good reason. Bylaws don't say that, but, and that's something else I would encourage you to think about and decide if we want to change it or not. It's, it's been this way for quite a while, but those are some things to point out, that when I really looked through these bylaws and saw how we're operating, you know, we really haven't been following these to the letter of the law, and if we're going to have bylaws that we're going to follow, I would suggest we change them to operate the way that we want to operate.
All right. So your suggestion would be, or by the board here, are there any suggestions as to whether we should go to the next meeting with this?
What I would suggest maybe is, anytime for, two weeks before the next meeting, if you have any specific input on that, you know, send it to us. You can't talk among yourself, but if you let us know, we could package that up and something maybe a little bit cleaner in terms of a vote or, or whatever. Again, this wasn't on tonight for a vote, but we hadn't heard any input, and if you could get it to us in the next two weeks, we can certainly prepare something that's a little cleaner for the next meeting, or at this point, I don't think the next meeting is real long, but if it, if it changes between now and then, we would probably move it to the next meeting, but this is an item that I think is, do some consideration, because it's been so long.
All right. Board?
I think that's what he just said, with this. If you have anything, you know, two weeks before the meeting, call and let him know.
He's given us, given us all we need for the, tonight, to follow up and go through it again, to make sure that all of the information is thoroughly reviewed by us, so that we can come through with some questions if we have it.
Kind of like we did on the last vote.
Yeah.
Thoroughly review it.
Thirdly, yeah, sometimes it helps, it helps. Other business?
Downtown Blue Road redevelopment area board report. The downtown Blue Road redevelopment board met on July 3rd. Our meeting started at 12:05 with the normal call to order and then roll call, approval of minutes. We had two sets of minutes, one from the regular meeting, which was May 7th, and then another set of minutes from June 17th, which was a joint workshop, which Mr. McGinnis had reference to. After that, we had a presentation and discussion of redevelopment board strategic priorities. The request to recommend to CRA the board priorities for the downtown Blue Road redevelopment area. That was a lengthy discussion, and then we were given an update on redevelopment projects. There were public comments, board comments, and then we adjourned at 1:10.
All right, all right. Midtown?
Midtown meeting was held on July 9th at 6:00 PM in City Hall, Commission Chambers, roll call on roll call, implication, pledge, flag, approval of minutes from July, from June 11th. Staff reports given, police department and court enforcement. Action item, DEV 2013-0606 site plan, Atlantic Drilling Corporation was approved, and the site is located at 321 Marion Street. Action plan, DEV 2013-001, O'Reilly's Auto Park was approved, and there will be no fixing cars on the premises, no services. The site is located at 145 North Nova Road. Redevelopment project update by Mr. Williams was given. No public, oh, one public comment, Pierre Lewis, and he was concerned about Martin McCain, and what was happening with, and what's the plans for meeting adjournment.
All right. Main Street, South Atlanta, read it up.
We met Wednesday, July the 10th, City Hall, and we discussed DEV 2013-071, which is a conceptual site plan for the Hard Rock Cafe, and so they went over and did a presentation on the details of that. It's going to be phenomenal, and I'm very impressed with their ability to put this thing together and truly think of so many different ways to benefit the people who are living in the area as well, just with the setup and the positioning of the building, just little stuff that they're doing. It's going to be a phenomenal project. It's going to be brought back to us next month, then we're going to actually build on something, but, but this month with just an overview, looking at what they're doing and putting together. We also discussed on Main Street some of the issues they're having with property owners and demolishing buildings to basically facilitate vending, you know, for special events. And so we're talking, trying to figure out how to put in verbiage to prevent people from just tearing down buildings just to facilitate the vending. So that's a, you know, issue that some people are having, and we definitely want to get it right, so that's, that's what we talked about, and then other than that, it was, that was it.
All right. Any public comment?
Mr. Public. Cameron? Any public comment?
Okay. Staff?
At the last meeting, Mrs. Benjamin announced that tonight would be her last evening with us, and also, that comes with that, she's also the appointment for the Midtown, so we need to get a volunteer that would like to fill her role in that. The city commission has to approve that, but I would suggest that we, tonight, talk about a volunteer to represent this board with that board.
All right. I know you got one.
Yes, I have one.
Tony, what do you think about?
I was just giving him the eye.
I was trying not to catch it. I wouldn't mind serving, my thing is the date and time of meetings, and I found out it meets on Tuesday with my church. I have a prior obligation for that Tuesday.
Same here.
The only thing, I do my leadership for church meetings and stuff, and I believe it's the second Tuesday of the month. If I can work it out, then I need some time to look at that if, you know...
Couldn't we wait till Mrs. Benjamin's replacement, and maybe that might be somebody that might be interested?
That could be a good suggestion.
Except for they'll be without a liaison for that time, but we'll, we'll certainly try to bring the information to you.
But that's happened before.
That's mine, because I got in the...
A gap? Okay.
Good suggestion.
We appreciate all of your time and effort for all you've given us.
And a comments by the board?
Since Mr. John Williams isn't here, I do welcome.
Mr. Public.
And being that the one item we had, you know, we really had five days, and yet it was a major item for an LDC item, he always brings up to us the, I think, the fire ratios, the coal ratios, and the submerged lands.
Of course.
And what was it, one other? That's been over two years, and has never, ever, if we could do this, this quick on something that's important, why cannot the planning staff take on one of these items and let's go after it? That's what we're here for, supposed to be involved in.
Exactly.
And in time for a, for a land development code, too.
Every one of those items that John's mentioned are in this draft, and it's, it's a very large cumbersome document, it's been taking a while to get through, but that's going to be coming to you in very near future.
So it is in there and coming in.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Every one of those are addressed.
All right. There's no other comments? Meetings adjourned?